Bruce, you must have something really good, too.
Of course I do. It's Bruce Danielson, and I guess I'm here to entertain you, too.
Good evening. I'd like to call this City Council meeting of Tuesday, January 11th, 2022, to order. Clerk, would you read the roll, please?
Council members, Nitzer?
Here.
Selberg?
Here.
Sale?
Here.
Starr? Brecky?
Here.
Erickson? Jensen?
Here.
Kylie?
Here.
Thank you. At this time, we're going to have our invocation followed by the Pledge of Allegiance. We have Reverend Constance Hagmeyer from the bishops of the South Dakota Synod, ELCA. So if we'd all rise for that and still stay standing for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Let us pray. Almighty God, you have called us to labor in your vineyard, and without you, we can do nothing. Grant your gracious presence at this meeting, that what we do will build up your whole church and this city. Let your Holy Spirit govern and direct us, that we may consult together peacefully, pleasing you with all that we say and do through Jesus Christ, our Savior and Lord. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Well, at this time, we move to the approval of the consent agenda. Are there any changes?
Move approval.
Second, Jensen.
Been moved by Selberg, second by Jensen. For approval, any discussion? If not, we'll take a roll call, please.
Council members, Nitzer?
Yes.
Selberg?
Yes.
Sale?
Yes.
Brecky?
Yes.
Jensen?
Yes.
Kylie?
Yeah.
That is passed six to nothing. We'll now move to the regular agenda. Can we have a motion to approve the regular agenda?
So move, Jensen.
Second, Nitzer.
Moved by Jensen, second by Nitzer. Any discussion? Seeing none, we're going to have a vote, please.
Council members, Nitzer?
Yes.
Selberg?
Yes.
Sale?
Yes.
Starr? Brecky?
Yes.
Erickson?
Here.
Jensen?
Yes.
Kylie?
Yeah.
That's approved, seven to nothing. Before we continue with our regular agenda, I'd like to review public input for agenda items. For regular agenda items, comments are limited to three minutes unless the item is being presented for final adoption, in which case public input is limited to five minutes. For all regular agenda items, comments are limited to the agenda item under consideration only. During general public input portion of the meeting, comments will be no more than three minutes per person, and comments are limited to topics which do not involve agenda items appearing earlier in the agenda, as comments will already have been received for those items. Clerk, can we go to the next item, please?
Item seventeen, reconsideration of an ordinance of the city of Sioux Falls, South Dakota, amending the code of ordinances of the city by amending Chapter thirty-nine, Personnel Regulations and Benefits, Retirement and Pensions, Section thirty-nine point zero three six, Application to Appointed Officers. The sponsors are council members Kylie and Erickson.
Council member Kylie, would you like to speak to this?
Yes, I would. This is once again the proposal to add the city attorney, the position of the city attorney, to the bump-back clause. The city attorney would join the fire chief and the police chief in being able to bump back to a position if they held a position previously within city government. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone from the public to wish to speak on this item?
Scott Harris from Sioux Falls. This is getting more confusing by the day. I was listening last week trying to figure out what was going on. I'll just repeat myself again. This appears to be directors, management, who get paid a lot of money, get very good pensions and benefits, and the reason why is because they're non-union employees. And so they have a different package than the union employees do. This is a union thing. This is not something that appointed, six-figure-a-year people should get. In private business, this may happen sometimes, but it's rare. If you apply to be in a position, and you know, you're coming up from another position, you should know that if you can't handle it, well, number one, you shouldn't have applied for it. But if you can't handle it, then you're gone. I don't understand why the taxpayers have to keep on people that failed at a job. It's not fair to us. There seems to be a lot of protectionism lately in the city and the council, and some of the ordinances are doing. It's always about protecting the employees and protecting the city. You don't work for the city. That's kind of a, that's not why we elect you. You're citizen or representatives. That's why we have elections. That's why you run for office. That's why you choose to run for office as citizen representatives. You're not, you're not, "Oh, we got to make sure that six-figure years directors, you know, they couldn't handle the job, but we can't just throw them out on the curb," even though they have master degrees and could work in the private sector very easily. They could work in any city in the country. They could easily get jobs. I've known quite a few directors that have left the city. Some of them have left Sioux Falls. Some of them have gone to other parts of the country. They're all doing very well. None of them were thrown to the curb, had to go work at Walmart, or, you know, had to take a pay cut of twenty thousand. Most of them got a pay raise, actually, after they left. So to say that we need to be worried about this, and we just keep adding more people to the list, "Well, this person needs to have bump back, and this person needs to have bump back, and this person needs to have bump back." You work for us. You should be looking out for the citizens, and if you have a manager or director that can't handle the job, they get their walking papers. We find somebody else that can do the job. You should be looking out for the best interest of us. And like I said, I don't know what's going on. I thought we already passed this, and now it's got more words thrown in there. If you look at the red notes, and you look at the blue notes, I don't know what the heck's going on. You just keep adding to it, and adding to it, and adding to it. This is why, if you go look at our city charter, it's a mess. It's just packed full of repetitive stuff. I've said a few years ago that there should be a task force put together on the city council with the directors to figure out, how do we clean the charter up? Take a lot of regulations out. Put it on the ballot. Clean it up. I think some private citizens are actually going to do that, so you guys might get out of that job. So, anyway, not sure what you're voting on tonight, so I can't really tell you the yes or no.
Any other public input on this? Counselors, do you have questions of the sponsor? Do we have a motion to approve?
Move approval, Jensen.
Second, Kylie.
Got a motion from Jensen, second by Kylie. Is there an amendment? Counselor Brecky?
Yes, I'd like to propose an amendment, and I'm going to have Denise read it for purposes of accuracy.
Counselor Brecky's motion to amend Section thirty-nine point zero three six B by striking appointive officers and inserting department head in the section title, and by striking paragraph A, and by relabeling B to A, and by striking the portion of the first sentence of the new sub-paragraph A through, including December thirty-first, 2015, and inserting department heads, and by inserting, or, quote, "or absence of reappointment or resignation in good standing," unquote, between, quote, "appointive offices," and, quote, "B return," quote, "civil service," between, quote, "former" and, quote, "position," and grade classification between pay and as an employee, and by striking paragraph C, unquote.
Is there a second?
Second, Starr.
Second by Starr. Counselor Brecky, would you like to speak to your amendment?
The language is obviously confusing, but the description is not. We passed what, again, is what I commonly called a bump-back ordinance, which allows for bump-back rights for appointive officials. And it had been originally in the city when this form of government was implemented, and it applied to all appointive officials. And it really hinged on a philosophy that you wanted to encourage a career path for your employees. It's really not about protecting them, but it's about encouraging them and supporting them, and getting them to move forward into appointive positions. And so, since we had started with kind of moving back in that direction, we had added the police chief and the fire chief, and now we were adding city attorney. And so I brought the issue forward in an amendment to add the rest of the department heads as well. And that's what I thought I was doing, but I learned later that we actually did go back to all appointive officials, which, quite frankly, I don't have a problem with, but that's not what I explained to the council, and that's not what they thought they passed. So this garbled-up language does what I originally stated I was doing, which was include the department heads. So all department heads will now have bump-back rights. There are a small number of appointive employees that are not department heads, and they will not have bump-back rights. I do, I very well may bring that forward at some future time, but when I proposed the amendment, that was not discussed, and that was not what the council thought they were voting on. And I would just, you know, in support of the motion, so this motion really just, instead of being police chief, fire chief, and city attorney, this is all department heads. In support of this motion, I would, you know, just summarily restate what I did last. It's really about a philosophical discussion and what kind of workplace environment you want to develop. And in a situation where the city is now, where it's highly competitive out there, and there's a shortage of employees, you really want to keep your good employees. And in the mid-management ranks, you really want to, as you invest in them, time and energy and training, you really want to encourage them to make the leap into those appointive positions. And I would argue that it is unique working for a city. It's different than private sector. Yes, private sector is volatile, too, but in city government, with a whole overlay of elected officials at the top, people can be put into positions, and it's not because they're not performing well that they're thrown out of the position. It's because, it's because of the political nature, you know, at the top level. And so, to have bump-back rights encourages those mid-managers who are operating very strongly to move in those positions, instead of either just setting, you know, in the mid-management's position or leaving the city, to go where they can advance their career interests further. So it worked in the past. It really didn't cause any problems. Many, many directors that left the city didn't exercise the bump-back rights that had them, and the handful that did, you know, had various reasons for doing it. And when they did, they performed very well in their previous positions and really caused no problems, you know, to the elected officials, and were able to, you know, retire, you know, after numerous years of, you know, really good service for the city. So I think those reasons still, you know, are what I'm basing it on. Really, it's more of a corrective thing, and I would, like I said, I want to make clear, I'm not, I'm quite frankly, not opposed to the other level of appointive officials. I'm not opposed to it being all appointive officials, because I think the philosophy can be applied to them. But I don't want to spring that on the council, and would save that for a later discussion where we could discuss that issue fully, and just do it at this, at this point, and then, you know, maybe later, if there's no problem with this, then we might consider that at a different date.
Thank you. Questions, comments, council members?
Mr. Chair.
Yes, Counselor Erickson.
Thank you. Thank you for just the ability to speak here, and I was confused with a few others and didn't realize it did include additional folks that would have been able to bump back. I know the intent was just to have that department head or director, department head is referred to as it is defined. I thought that was a little odd that we call it that, but that's what's defined in the ordinance. In the name of consistency, I will be voting against this again. I do support fire, police, and attorney, as those are very, very, very specific roles with that. You know, coming from a, working in state government many years ago, as well as being in the legislature, you truly serve at the pleasure of the mayor or the governor, or whatever role that you are appointed to. And with that does come some additional risk with that. You know, why attorney and fire and police were added is because it's such a specific area of where are you going to go if you're the police chief unless you move cities? You're not going to go and be a mall cop. You're not going to go and do something really different. And so that's why those were originally added back in within the last couple of years here. So again, I won't be supporting it for those reasons. I do support it as a whole for attorney, fire, and police, and that's where my vote will land. Thank you.
Other counselors, questions, comments? Counselor Nitzer?
This is one I continue to struggle with, and it's going to be literally a call-the-vote, game-time decision. Because, and I've mentioned this before, I, like probably most people in this, you know, in this city, I've been an at-will employee my entire life, working with private organizations, so I have, any day of the week, I have absolutely no guarantee of my job security. And, you know, I live with that, so it's just my hard work and a little bit of luck, you know? And so, I have to make those judgments about whether or not to, I want to go somewhere else, or take a shot, or, you know, things like that. So, so just in theory, I just struggle with just bump-back in general. But I've also served on the council, and I also realize, you know, you're talking about, there's, I mean, trust me, I work for a larger organization. There's politics in a large organization. But this is a political environment, and so you do have people where they are in the civil service, and I could certainly see there could be some risk, and they may be averse, if they're risk averse, to making that leap, to take a position, with the concern that a year or two later, they may just get moved out. But also balancing that, you do think about the fact that it is true that, I have no doubt that being a director certainly is going to be good on the resume, and having positions like that are going to open doors. They just are. So if you leave the organization, I suspect, and I've seen historically, it's usually not a tough thing to find employment elsewhere. So I also get Counselor Brecky's point that, you know, it is doing a little bit of mental gymnastics to try to, you could certainly argue that you either need to be for it or against it, one hundred percent either way. And I think there's some serious consideration to that. I have to do some mental gymnastics to get myself on the police and fire idea. And when I think about an attorney, I, you know, I have some more struggles with that, too. I mean, attorney deals with unique law here when you're talking about municipal law, but that being said, I, there's no shortage of attorneys, and I'm sure that a city attorney, a good city attorney, could probably find a good position locally. So, anyway, all of that to say that this is a tough one, and this is going to be one of those rare ones where, whichever way I go, I'm not going to be sure that I'm making the right call on this one. Thanks.
Other council members? Counselor Starr?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair. I think where the confusion's coming in is, I think we decided very closely that we wanted to extend the bump-back to all the department heads. Where I think that we got into trouble a little bit is that we included appointive officers. Does the mayor's administrative assistant need to be included in the bump-back? And that's definitely someone who goes from a true civil service role to that part of it. So for me, it's not talking, we're not just re-deciding whether or not that we want to do the bump-back rule for all department heads. It's whether or not we include those people who've been appointed, appointed council staff, appointed by the mayor. It's a small group of people, but it's an additional one. So I think, rephrasing it, that's really what we're trying to reconsider tonight. I really think if we're going to include the department heads, you take the appointed people at the same time. I mean, it doesn't make sense for an administrative assistant to leave, because the new mayor wants their own person in that office that takes care of their personal schedule and their time. That, I mean, in the big picture of things, that's the type of person I want to protect by this. I'm not sold on the bump-back either, but I'm going along with it, because it should be everyone. It should be department heads. I think it's kind of insulting to say that there isn't specialized training, that if you have a background in public health, or in being the librarian, go down the list of department heads, and if we're going to go down the police and fire, and now we're going to, we're adding attorney, then, you know, next time we'll make an argument that it should be the librarian, and it should be the health director. It should be, you know, I mean, you could go down the whole list. So for me, it's all or nothing. And making, carving out special ones to say that we want to just promote those people from inside, again, go with the librarian, the training. We want people to aspire to lead that department, but it is also a special skill to be a librarian. There aren't a lot of six-figure librarian jobs in Sioux Falls, so you're leaving the community if you don't get a chance to bump back. You can make an argument that maybe you could go for, work for one of the health, two hospital systems. But really, what we're trying to decide is, do we leave the appointed officers in? So to cut through the confusion, I think we needed to have the discussion. That's why I seconded the amendment, but I'm not going to support the amendment that doesn't include the appointive officers as well.
Other questions, comments, counselors? Counselor Brecky?
I would just, you know, add one other thing that I don't, that is, I guess, new, new that I haven't spoken about at the previous meeting, is one of the things about this form of government is, you know, over time, it really has paralleled state government in that it's not unusual in state government, you know, for the governor to come in, and there can be a complete reinstatement of all new people, because when the governor comes in, you know, really, they want to put their team in and change out all of those positions. And in this last, and over time, that's become increasingly the new normal for the city, that more directors leave and more new people come in. And so, you know, it's more because, you know, as the city grows, that mayor, you know, has the authority and may want to just bring in his team. And again, if we want to encourage, you know, people to come into those positions, you know, from the mid-management, to have those career paths, it does become very volatile by having them, you know, just subject to, you know, wholesale changeover when a new mayor comes in. So I do think it's good to at least keep them within the organization. And again, it doesn't happen very often, and when it has, it has worked out.
Thank you. Other counselors? Hearing no other comments, clerk will have a vote on the amendment.
Council member Nitzer?
No.
Selberg?
No.
Sale?
Yes.
Starr?
No.
Brecky?
Yes.
Erickson?
No.
Jensen?
No.
Kylie?
Yeah.
Counselor Selberg, can I ask you for your vote again? I didn't quite hear it.
No.
The amendment has failed, five to three. This time, any more discussion on the main motion?
Yes, Mr. Chair.
Counselor Kylie?
Thank you very much. So we are back to the main motion, which will add the ability of the city attorney to bump back to a previously held position within the city, if he or she held such a position in city government before being appointed and confirmed, appointed by the mayor and then confirmed by the city council. We would be adding the city attorney to the police and fire. And I do believe, you know, again, I'll remind everybody that we brought this forward originally, because this council just placed on the ballot for this coming election in April, a proposed charter amendment that would allow the city council to actually release or fire the city attorney. So this is an attempt to make the position more attractive, especially to the best and the brightest that exist within current city government. And again, this is, being a city attorney, as Counselor Erickson had mentioned, being a city attorney is quite unique. Governmental law is quite a bit different than practicing law in a private firm or for a private business or private company. Therefore, I would encourage you to support the main motion, which is now to add the city attorney to that bump-back provision, along with police and fire. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Kylie. Any other discussion? Seeing none, we'll vote.
Council members, Nitzer?
No.
Selberg?
Yes.
Sale?
Yes.
Starr?
Yes.
Brecky?
No.
Erickson?
Yes.
Jensen?
Yes.
Kylie?
Yeah.
The main motion is passed six to two. Next item, please.
Item eighteen is a second reading in ordinance of the city of Sioux Falls, South Dakota, authorizing the mayor to enter into a lease between the city of Sioux Falls and ZEAL Doing Business as Startup Sioux Falls. Sponsor, mayor.
Sean Pritchard, are you on the line?
I am. Good evening. This is Sean Pritchard, Director of Finance, and I apologize for not being able to be present in person this evening. This evening, I am presenting before you, second reading of the ordinance authorizing the mayor to enter into an agreement with ZEAL Doing Business as Startup Sioux Falls for the lease of the historic building located at the corner of the Sixth Street and Phillips Avenue in downtown Sioux Falls, formerly used as the Parks and Recreation Administrative Offices until they vacated that facility and relocating in the city center. Last week, we went through the various provisions of the lease in specific detail, and while not looking to repeat that presentation, I do want to quickly highlight some of the high-level terms and conditions of the proposed lease agreement with Startup Sioux Falls. Firstly, Startup Sioux Falls would lease the building for up to ten years to utilize for their administrative space, co-working space, and event space. They would pay a nominal lease of one dollar per year to the city. Startup Sioux Falls plans to remodel the space so it has the look, feel, and appearance that represents the organization and the energy of entrepreneurship, including the creation of event space in the building, which the city would be able to use up to six times per year at no expense. While currently is under design, it is expected that Startup Sioux Falls would invest up to one million dollars in the interior remodeling of the building. The city would have the right to terminate the lease after six years, reimbursing up to fifty percent of the actual costs, or, excuse me, sixty percent of the original cost incurred by Startup Sioux Falls for those tenant improvements. Startup Sioux Falls would be allowed daytime use for thirteen parking spaces exclusively and four spaces non-exclusively. The city retains the right to approve any subleasing, as well as all construction plans and specifications. Startup Sioux Falls would have the ability to negotiate naming rights, but the terms could not exceed that of the lease. Proceeds from this would help to fund the interior improvements. Naming rights are still subject to ordinance and final approval from the city council. One of the questions that was asked last week was whether we had an appraisal completed when the city exchanged the land for ownership of the building back in 2004. In doing some research on this this past week, we did not find an appraisal, but there was a value assigned to the building of five hundred and fifty thousand dollars at the time that that exchange was closed. So assuming, so we are assuming that there was probably some sort of independent appraisal completed at that time, but that was eighteen years ago. And you can certainly presume that the value of that building has escalated significantly since that time. I would also suggest that it most definitely will appreciate even significantly more over the next several years, as development continues to occur in that surrounding area. Startup Sioux Falls through its affiliation with Greater Sioux Falls Area Chamber, Sioux Falls Development Foundation, and Ford Sioux Falls has been a critical partner for the city for many years. a critical partner for the city for many years. Startup Sioux Falls has a track record of success in helping to incubate businesses that have become part of our business fabric of this community, diversifying jobs and economic sectors. Not unlike our other partners, like the Multicultural Center, or the Link, or many other organizations we support, we have a vested interest in their success, and ultimately, their success will be our success. We have seen significant economic development announcements over the last twenty-four months, and there will be more coming in the months ahead. These developments will create spinoffs in Startup Sioux Falls that critical, uh, infrastructure and providing advice, resources, and support needed help capitalize on these spinoff opportunities. Lastly, uh, there is the supplemental benefit of activating this corner and area of downtown, particularly during periods when the levee is not operating. It has the benefit of taking a currently idle city asset and putting it to good use, uh, with, uh, which the area around, which will incur while the area around it transfer, transforms over the course of the next several years. And we don't necessarily know what the next iteration of that site might look like in ten years from now, but I do know, uh, that is, could be something very different, uh, in terms of its use than what we might be able to conceptualize today. With that, we appreciate your support, consideration of this request. I'll stand by and answer any questions you might have in regard to this proposal.
Thank you. At this time, is there anybody from the public who wishes to speak on this item?
So here we go again. I don't care about downtown. I don't care about the rich elite people. Okay? Because the rich elite people don't understand the concept of everyday living. They go in their backyards and they drink their wine, and they don't want to come into neighborhoods that drink beer. So they never can concept two plus two equals four. So I'm going to tell you that getting to know Matt Paulson here, that's a millionaire that has worked for his money, that's not, hasn't, uh, worked for his money, so his money is, I, I, I'm guessing legitimate, unlike some millionaires that are not. The building sat there forever and a day. There were some buyers that wanted to buy, they said they didn't want to give up the land. There are some questions about, was there people that asked the city before ZEAL came in to do something with the building? And I was told, yes, but it wasn't a good fit, or whatevernot. I do understand that the mayor was on the board of ZEAL before he came, the mayor. I can handle Matt, Matt Paulson. I can handle the rich. There's a difference between a rich and a rich elite. We have to either do something with this building, or what do we do? We bulldoze it down, and then we have a green space, and then the Bishop Dolly people can sit out there and, and cater to downtown too, like it is in every neighborhood? So the building that's going to sit there is just going to rise up crime because it's a vacant building, and then they're going to sit there, and they go squat in there, and then broken windows are going to appear, and blah, 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 when we have vacant rentals, properties within the city. People's always saying that ZEAL, 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 I don't know who's on the board, I don't care if they're rich or not rich, I don't know. I can verify that Matt Paulson has done some development in the city, correct? I, I, I think he's done a lot. I think he's doing more. And, and has he came up here and asked for TIF, which he can apply for TIF, because the, the law states that he can't apply for it. By any means, he can get a tax break galore on it, you know? He hasn't applied for that. You know, a lot of people's against TIFs, and I get that. But Matt Paulson never once asked for a handout for the city. Now, mind you, he's a millionaire. Mind you, he's rich and of the rich elite. Matt Paulson would sit here and go into your backyard and drink beer and give up some wine. Matt Paulson will sit here with the middle-class, poor people in neighborhoods and sit and have coffee with you at two dollars a cup of coffee, or McDonald's cup of coffee. That's your rich people. I don't care about downtown, he could have put it somewhere else. But he chose to spend his money, or whoever's money, to put their own money out of their own pocket into this building to save this building. Who else would have did that? If there's a cutback, if there's a kickback on it, I, I, I want to know where, because citizens are saying there's a kickback on it. So where, where do you think that, that money, that one million dollars that's coming out of whoever's pocket is making money on this, on this deal here? Except, you know, the mayor could have been involved in it and, and, and supported this because he was on the board. But to my recollection, and to my sources said that people did throughout the years, wanted to do something with that building. But again, the plans of that building did not go through for some reason. I understand that people wanted to buy the building for eight hundred thousand dollars, and the city did not want to buy it. We can't make the city, uh, uh, sit there and, um, buy, uh, sell property to people if they don't want to buy their land. And we, and we get back to other, other commercial properties where people just think that we can overtake land. The city needs to, the city needs to sell it, the city needs to do this, that, the other. It's the city's property, it's the city's business. So before people say something about, um, Matt Paulson here, uh, behind with ZEAL here, and I don't know who's on the board, and I really don't care who's on the board, but we should be applauding these people that took that money out of their pockets and getting access to TIF for the city, and is going to put it into some usage on this corner lot here.
Anyone else for input on this subject?
Scott Ersmann, Sioux Falls. Let's first clarify something. Nobody has taken any money out of their pocket and spent a single penny or a dime on this building to remodel it. They might do that. We'll get to that in a moment. Said to someone the other day that it doesn't really matter how the council votes on it, they could all vote against it, they could all vote for it. Nobody was paying attention. Most people in this city have no idea what ZEAL is, they have no idea what Startup Sioux Falls is, they have no idea that the taxpayers of this city help fund some of those programs. They have, they have no clue. Um, I went and did some research last night. Forty-five percent of the workforce in Sioux Falls makes under a living wage. That's, I, I put it at twenty dollars an hour. So forty-five percent of our workforce don't even make a living wage in this town. Do you think they really care about starting their next business when they can't even save three hundred dollars to fix their car? No. There's no reason why the city needs to partner with this, and I'll tell you why. There's tons of offices down, space downtown. There's tons of organizations involved with startup and ZEAL that could give them office space. Office space that's ready to go the day they move in. They don't have to gut a building, they don't have to spend a million dollars. The thing that, the issue I have with this is, I couldn't care less if they're renting from us. They should really be renting from us. They're not, it's a dollar. There's lots of conflicts of interest, there's lots of people who are sat on the boards, there's a lot of people involved in business with a lot of these people and a lot of these board members. We all know how it works. I've talked about this a lot. The issue I have is, is like I said at the beginning, nothing in this contract, I've read it three times, says they must spend the million dollars they're promising to spend. Nothing. Not one tiny little sentence, not one single paragraph. Now, we have a, we have a thing in there where they have to cover insurance for a half, one and a half million. We have a thing in there where we're going to give them some money back, but we definitely, it's weird how we have something in there that we're going to give them money back, we have nothing in there that says they have to spend it. Well, they said they're going to spend it. Oh, wow. Have we learned nothing? Let's go back in history. The pavilion was going to cost us nineteen million dollars, it's cost us well over fifty to sixty to seventy million dollars. The entertainment tax was going to go away when we paid off those bonds. They didn't. Then they said they were going to use it to pay the mortgage on the event center. That didn't happen. Of course, none of that was in writing, as usual. HVAC system failed at the administration building. I think we're still on the hook for that. Uh, the windows failed at the midco because we used construction manager at risk. We didn't learn anything there. We got screwed on the siding on the event center. We'll be paying for that down the road, like we're paying for the pavilion six million dollar roof, because they didn't build it correctly. All has to do with what we sign and what we put in a contract, folks. I've had other people read that contract who actually work in the development business and actually work in the leasing business. They said it's one of the sloppiest contracts they've ever seen in their life. There's nothing holding them to anything, except that they get a dollar a year rent for ten years. That's it. That's it. I don't understand why they can't be in there. They said they're going to spend a million dollars. Okay, that's great. Why don't we put that in the contract and you can sign it? Or at least a billion dollars, or a hundred thousand dollars a year for ten years. I just don't understand. We had a press conference in twenty eighteen, right here. We built a twenty-six million dollar bunker ramp from a guy who handed one piece of paper over to the city, saying, I'm good for the money. That was good enough. Did we learn nothing from that incident? We didn't. Because guess who's on the hook if they, if they don't spend a million dollars to remodel the building? They're not on the hook. You're not on the hook. The mayor's not on the hook. We are, the taxpayers. Because we couldn't write a two-sentence paragraph saying they'd spend a million dollars. We just couldn't do it. We learned nothing. Building after building after building after building after building. Disaster.
Anyone else for public comment on this?
Good evening. Joe Batchelor, President of Downtown Sioux Falls. Uh, folks, I don't know about you, but I'm excited about this opportunity. When I first heard that Startup Sioux Falls wanted to locate downtown, uh, seemed like the perfect fit. And, uh, to me, I was thinking, well, it's about time. Uh, you know, entrepreneurs want to be downtown. They, uh, have systems like this in place in other cities. Innovation districts is kind of a new concept. Uh, they've been around for a while, but that's kind of the branding that's been put to these types of, of places, where you have this potent mix of places like Startup Sioux Falls, these incubator types of institutions, research institutions, tech sector, and, uh, now with the development of smart city, uh, infrastructure, uh, it, it creates a place where headquarters want to be. Not just the businesses that you incubate in the city, but places start to look at downtown Sioux Falls as a place where they want to locate their corporate headquarters. And that's what this opportunity provides. You know, it's, so it, it's really important that Startup Sioux Falls locate in downtown for these reasons. You've got, uh, like I said, entrepreneurs want to be downtown because you have the opportunity for a variety of social collisions to happen, where the free exchange of ideas can happen, and new startups can arise out of that. That's why it's important that it's downtown. And it's important that the city allow Startup Sioux Falls to lease the building for a dollar a year, because when you're geographically tied to a place and you're a nonprofit, the impact that you have on the community can be negatively impacted by a cost like high rent. So I think it's really important to keep that in mind in this. Uh, and with that, uh, I think that it's a great opportunity that would be a shame to pass up, because this would be a win for not just downtown, but for Sioux Falls. And so I urge you to support this. Thank you.
Other comments?
I just like, I just like to echo what Joel said. I think it, I think it's, I think this is a win-win for the city of Sioux Falls, for the residents. I mean, it, it's not, it doesn't, I think too much is being made out of the, of the lease situation, the lease, the one-dollar lease situation. I think I look at, I look at this two different ways. I mean, I look at, we're having, we're getting private investment to invest, invest their own money in a, in a historical building, that someday in the future could be used as a museum, or, or showcase for the Falls Park itself. I think this, this, this also shows the mayor, the mayor's actually working, doing his best to, to stand up in, in defense of small business, who are, who are taking a big hit in this, in this economy. I think you, you look around the country, and you've seen all the, all the, all the regulations are, are in favor of the, of big business. Here's a, well, here's a chance, here's a, here's a mayor, supporting small business and helping people, helping people, helping, uh, energize the local economy. So I think for the, for the most part, I think Joel said it best. I think, I think it would be a fool to pass this down. Thank you.
Other comments?
Good evening, City Council. I'm Matt Paulson. I'm a board member with Startup Sioux Falls. Just wanted to start by introducing a few of our board members and staff members we have here with us tonight. Uh, we have Jason Herball, he's a new board member. We have Bill Anderson, he is our board chair. Uh, we have Sarah Lum, she is our program and marketing manager, I believe. And then we have Barb Glazier, who is our accountant. And Jeff Griffin with the chamber is also on our board. So that's who is here with us tonight from Startup Sioux Falls. Um, I want you guys, or I want you all to think of this as kind of an economic development platform that we are trying to create. Uh, yes, we are talking about a building and putting people in that building, but it's really about what the people will be doing in that building. Over the last few years, um, ZEAL has transformed into Startup Sioux Falls to really be a business incubation platform. We've seen a few early wins from this. One of them is the Co-Starters Accelerator Program. We had fifty companies go through it last year to help understand, um, like their product cost, how to develop their product, how to market their product, understand who their customers are, kind of basic business stuff like that. And we got a billion-dollar grant from the SBA to expand that statewide to underserved communities. Uh, so that's really just a glimpse of the types of things we're going to do in that facility. This is really kind of new business formation, economic development. Um, you know, we have a mentor network. I learned today, we have fifty-one business mentors in that that are available to meet with small business owners, and startup founders, and freelancers, and people that want to start a business or expand a business. And I really see these things as really only the beginning. Uh, you know, we do some networking events, such as One Million Cups. We do business training and education events. And really, over time, as we kind of finish the transition to becoming a startup ecosystem organization, there's really a lot more we'll be able to do. Um, one of the things that I hope to do in the future is start a code school, to start, uh, teach people how to do computer programming that might not be a fit for a traditional four-year school. That'll fill some unmet, some, some, you know, there's a lot of open jobs in the tech space, and especially as you think about what DSU is going to do in, in town in the next few years, uh, that need's only going to get worse. So if we can do something to address that through Startup Sioux Falls, I think that'll be a win. I think there's an opportunity to partner with DTSF to do some kind of business, uh, or retail business incubation program, uh, whether it's downtown or citywide. I think that's something we could pursue. And, um, there's also been talk about doing something to help creatives, um, artists, and, um, musicians monetize their work. Uh, that is something we'd like to pursue over time as well. So, uh, we've had some really good early wins in the last couple of years, and we are going to build on them as, you know, as soon as you guys approve us moving into the building. We really appreciate your support on that. But this is really the start of a business incubation platform that we can grow over time, over the next ten years. Uh, the other thing that I want you guys to think about is, you know, think about the big, big businesses in town, and how they started. Uh, for us to have large employers in town, they need, they start a small employer. Sanford, uh, Sioux Valley started as a kind of brick building, you know, one-building hospital. First premier was a small bank at one point. Um, Poet started as a small ethanol plant on the Bruin Family Farm. Um, you know, for us to have large employers and diverse industries, uh, we need to foster small businesses today so that we can have the large employers twenty years from now. I have no idea which company that we mentor will turn into that big business, but we want to mentor all of them and help all of them, so they all have a strong likelihood of success. Uh, that's what we're here for, and I would encourage you to vote in the affirmative on this list. Thank you.
Any other public comment on this topic?
Good evening. Jeff Griffin, President of the Greater Sioux Falls Chamber of Commerce. Uh, thank you for letting me speak. Uh, I spent yesterday, and I just actually got off the road from Pierre for the start of the legislative session, and, uh, speaking with legislators out there who, you know, uh, I'm very optimistic. Even, even those, you know, we're going to have, uh, issues throughout, uh, but the debate and, um, it's Even those, you know, we're gonna have issues throughout, but the debate is gonna go well. But the optimism comes from, there's not a lot of guys in this country that have my job, that have the resources that we have at the Greater Sioux Falls Chamber of Commerce. And it's part of the family that's been built here in Sioux Falls, that I feel very fortunate to be a part of. Startup Sioux Falls, the Development Foundation has some board members, the Chamber has some board members, there's some private, it's very well-balanced. I think what gets lost sometimes is our partners in this, in addition to those who want to provide the mentoring services for entrepreneurs who have an idea or want to move to town. Our partners include education, and the universities, colleges, the local public schools and private schools, and the county and city governments, of course. So it's, and the social service agencies as well are part of this, to make the whole system work well for everyone, not just one class of folks. And as Matt pointed out, the larger businesses start as smaller businesses. So when our phone continues to ring, which we know it will, for people interested in Sioux Falls and South Dakota, this adds another tool in our tool chest, growing tool chest. So there is a tremendous amount of checks and balances with this, and responsibility to the citizens of Sioux Falls, with Startup Sioux Falls, the Development Foundation, our Forward Sioux Falls family, Downtown Sioux Falls, Experian Sioux Falls. We all take our responsibility to this community very seriously, and this is gonna be a great addition to our downtown, and a great resource for our entrepreneurial community. So I urge you to support.
Other public comment?
Good evening, Council. Thank you for the opportunity to address you and to speak in support of this move for Startup Sioux Falls to downtown Sioux Falls. My name is Bill Anderson, I'm the Board Chair of Startup Sioux Falls. I became involved with Startup Sioux Falls in 2015, first in a consultative role, later to assist in strategic planning. Later on, I was asked to join the board, and now I serve as the Chair, and am beginning a second term, because of my belief in the strength of the quality of the board, and of the vision and mission of the organization. I have to tell you first that this proposal comes in concert with an extraordinary group of people serving on the Board of Directors, and easily the strongest group of directors that I've been a part of, over the course of my now nearly seven years being involved with Startup Sioux Falls. Also, I'm here representing an extraordinary staff of people, who have continued to build on the programs and mission of the organization, and have indicated a real vision for the way that Startup Sioux Falls can help this community, support entrepreneurs and founders. This downtown move, as we've talked about, really provides convenience for founders and entrepreneurs, that right now simply does not exist in the northwest quadrant of Sioux Falls. It also offers an opportunity to activate a corner in downtown Sioux Falls that provides convenience for entrepreneurs to bump into one another, have coffee, engage, and build that next great business for the Sioux Falls area. I want to speak a little bit about the programs that Startup Sioux Falls has engaged in over the course of the last couple of years, to provide you evidence of their strength. And Matt has referenced some of those already. Our Co-Starters Program, where we have put fifty young businesses through over the course of the past year, and will only grow soon because of the awarding of the large SBA grant that Matt referenced. That SBA grant also focuses our attention, not just on what you might consider to be a typical entrepreneur profile in the Greater Sioux Falls area, but also encourages the growth of diverse businesses in the Greater Sioux Falls area, and that matches very well with the mix and vibrancy of downtown Sioux Falls. The Mentorship Network, which allows successful entrepreneurs and founders to unite and to engage those Co-Starters graduates, and those individuals who are aspiring to start businesses in the Greater Sioux Falls. And this incubation opportunity that we have in the downtown corridor, to help with those kinds of collisions. The events that we've referenced already, One Million Cups, Hey Sioux Falls, Pitch Nights, not only for profit, but for nonprofit businesses, this provides a hub for those events to succeed and thrive. And just today, I had an opportunity to bump into an individual who is considering homebasing, or partially homebasing their business in the Greater Sioux Falls area. They have a successful consultancy, and they discussed the possibility of incubating their own business in this downtown location, because they recognize the opportunity that it provides them. This is an activation of a corner, it's a support for entrepreneurs and founders in the Greater Sioux Falls community, and I truly believe that this move to downtown Sioux Falls is the next opportunity to incubate that exciting new business for the Greater Sioux Falls area. I urge you to support this move. I strongly support the investment the community is making in this space and this facility, and I also am proud of the work that this Board of Directors has done for Startup Sioux Falls, to cast a vision, and now to put ourselves in a position to successfully move into a beautiful downtown space. Thank you very much, councilors.
Anyone else? Last call. Councilors, questions of Sean Pritchard, or anybody that spoke? Counselor Nitzer?
Thank you, Chair. I do have a question for Director Pritchard, based on the discussion and testimony we heard. Director, could you speak to any requirement to build out, and if, what if any level of finish or build-out we're looking for, and whether this opportunity is contingent upon any build-out?
Thank you, Counselor Nitzer. So throughout the conversation, the space that is currently laid out is not conducive to occupation in the current state for Startup Sioux Falls, and certainly not in the vision that they have for utilizing the facility. So ultimately, the intent is to fulfill the obligation, but they are under design right now, in very early stages of that design, and so determining the final cost, a cost estimate, that's something that's in progress. I would also point out that the title, naming rights for the facility are really tied to generating the capital necessary to invest into that facility as well. And that is another action item that will be coming before the Council, prior to moving forward with that, and securing those funds. The other thing I would state is, you know, if there's concerns of whether the organization actually invests into the facility and makes the necessary improvements, I would point to the fact that, you know, even with no improvements to the facility, you have to look at the economic development perspective of this. We would have a tenant that's paying utilities of the building that we are currently incurring. They would be responsible for maintaining the building, which we are currently incurring as a city. And so there's certainly, that certainly is in tune with the economic benefits of having Startup Sioux Falls located in that facility, and generating that activation and programming in that area, overall, for everyone involved. The second thing I would point out, too, is that we're working with a partner of the city, one that we've had a relationship with, through our affiliation with the Chamber, the Development Foundation, and Forward Sioux Falls, various organizations that we fund either directly or indirectly on an annualized basis. And so we're not dealing with an unknown entity. These are Board of Directors and staff who reside in our community, and all have a vested interest in following through on the commitments that are made as part of this lease.
Thank you.
Other questions of staff? I'd entertain a motion.
Move approval, Jensen.
Second, Selberg.
A motion to approve by Jensen, second by Selberg. Discussion, councilors. Counselor Selberg.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Well, I think this is a great opportunity. I think Startup Sioux Falls has terrific leadership, and they're more than qualified to take the organization to the next level. And I do think that this should have a strong impact on both new business startups, and on workforce development, which obviously is key right now. And I agree with what Director Pritchard had said, where I do believe that their success will be our success in the long run. So I happily support this and wish them well. Thank you.
Counselor Nitzer?
We heard a lot tonight, but I was trying to just simplify it, and as I think about it, you know, it's not really about any one person. We have an underused asset that's just a vacant building, we're not using it, but we also don't want to lose control of it. It's in a very important area, right next to the Levitt, and then there's the logistical challenges and those things that we've talked about. We make significant contributions to Forward Sioux Falls and other entities for economic development, and one of our goals, of course, is job formation and incubating businesses. And you don't put all of your eggs in one basket, this is one of many ways in which to help to, help to incubate those jobs. As was said, the little, the big business doesn't start as anything but a small business. So, you know, winning Amazons are great, that's fine, but we've had some incredible innovation here, and jobs that have been created, and if you want those high-paying jobs, it's helping to give those entrepreneurs with a dream and a shoestring the skills and the knowledge that they need. And so I just look at this, this is simply, rather than making potentially a donation to something that is a critical item that we want to look at, rather than a cash donation, it's an in-kind donation. We have a building, and we're making it available, because they're helping us achieve one of our strategic objectives, and they can do it much better than we can. So I'm happy to support it, but I think it's pretty simple, it's not that complicated. Thanks.
Other discussion? Counselor Starr?
Yes. Thank you, Mr. Chair. A couple of things. First of all, Director Pritchard, thank you for doing the research I asked last week about the purchase price of the building and the conditions, and I appreciate you taking the time to do the research. It'd be nice to know what the building, you know, even a competitive market analysis of what the building's worth as we do that, but it's better to have an idea what the asset is. I'm struggling with, why do we hold on to an asset that the city has no need for? We've been talking about selling this building since we started with the administration building. I, you know, I mentioned last time that this, that we were looking to sell as part of moving the Parks Department, we were looking at a number of assets across the city that we would sell to combine people, and I confirmed that that was the case, that that was part of the discussion. I'm at a point where it makes more sense for the city to not be in the land speculation business, and that's really what we're doing here, is we're holding on to a piece of property because we think we might possibly need it in the future, but it's better to have a tenant till we figure it out, and this is kind of a half-step towards that. And in my world, I would rather us sell an asset and repay bonds than hold on to something that we're doing. I think Director Pritchard did make a compelling case that holding on to it because we're gonna want it as part of the Levitt, we want to control that. But again, that's not the role of government to control possibly needing it in the future. We buy assets when we need them, we sell them when they don't. If we want to make it into a future park, or we want to do these other things with the Levitt, you know, maybe that's the case. But ultimately, in the big picture, if we'd have had an informational, and we'd have had a full discussion, we'd have probably talked about selling and saying that that makes a lot more sense. Bottom line for me with this is that this supports what Startup Sioux Falls does. I think most people who run for public office, the first thing we say is that we want to bring jobs to Sioux Falls that pay. This is an opportunity to bring jobs to Sioux Falls that pay a living wage. You know, we talk all the time about that kind of thing, whether we need more housing for people who make eighty percent of the AMI, and those type of things. But this organization, its desire, its goal, its purpose, is to bring jobs that pay. And that's really what we needed in this city right now, so people can pay for their own housing, so they don't need to have government supplement their housing costs, or the government to figure out a way to buy land, or bring manufactured housing parks to town, all the other things that we're talking about, rather than talking about raising wages. So in the bottom line, with all the good, the bad, and like most deals, this group is gonna use this facility to bring better-paying jobs to Sioux Falls. That I can support. Thank you.
Counselor Jensen?
Well, thank you. Again, I agree with a lot of the people that have spoken already, and again, like Counselor Nitzert said, this is not a complicated deal. This is the city of Sioux Falls, looking to diversify the jobs that are created here. A speaker last week talked about the attraction of businesses, that's happening through our Development Foundation, and just the natural, you know, benefits that Sioux Falls and South Dakota has right now. We've got the Chamber, and the Chamber's supportive of this, and the partnership that they have with ZEAL and Startup Sioux Falls, and they help service the businesses. Now we have a real opportunity here to inject and establish another piece to that, and bring that downtown, and a new chapter to Startup Sioux Falls. So this is not complicated, it is not land speculation, it is not about having the government control wages, it's about creating an incubator for the diversification of jobs, and to believe in the people that are starting that, and give them the resources they need. It's not complicated, so, you know, a lot of people can talk about how complicated it is, but this is about jobs, and creating new jobs, creating big companies, small companies, all sizes of companies. So I'd encourage your support of this, and let's move this through.
Counselor Breckie?
When I first heard about this, it raised several questions for me, because it's not a normal situation for us to lease buildings, and to lease them for less than market value. And so the first thing I did was, you know, try to do my homework, and try to find out, you know, have we done things like this before? And so I asked the Finance Department to do some work for me, I asked the Legal Department to do some work for me. And while it's not common, it's not that unusual either. We have other similar situations where we have done something similar. I can find no other building, because usually the city doesn't have empty buildings. We either use them, or we sell them. Mostly, we use them. I think there's only a few buildings we've sold over the years, a few fire departments have been sold, but mostly, the city recycles buildings. So I am not in favor of selling it particularly, because it's, you know, adjacent to park property, it's a few blocks away from our library, it's a few blocks away from museums. There's all kinds of potential for reprogramming that building. What I did find is we have leased property, and sometimes we've done that for under-market value, and we've leased to profits, for-profits, and we've leased to nonprofits. We've leased, the Sheridan is on city ground, the Crooked Pint, those are for-profit situations, just to provide amenities, you know, that are located near city, you know, near the city parks, or near city facilities. We've leased to nonprofits, the Zoo, the Great Bear, the Butterfly House, Multicultural Center, those are to provide, you know, cultural services and experiences. These are all land leases. And I think for me, the most, the one that's most analogous to this situation was the Sheridan, because that one was an eighty-year lease, and, you know, for one dollar, and we actually begged John Q. Hammond to come here and build us a flagship hotel. The one thing that I'm concerned about, and I'm not concerned about the deal, but I think that some people have gotten some black eyes on this deal that don't deserve it. And so what I would just say is, for the future, I think we have to be a little bit careful about just doing the deal and bringing it forward, because most of the time in the city, you know, we need to do things competitively. And one of the previous citizens testified a week ago, you know, that gee, did the city think about going out for an RFP? You know, if we have a vacant building, and we want to, you know, and we want to, you know, fill that building, shouldn't we have gone out for an RFP? And I, again, I think it's analogous to the Sheridan situation. We did, you know, go out for proposals twice, actually. We turned them all down once, and then we begged John Q. to come in and build something bigger, and he came in. In the future, this isn't a criticism, because I understand there's various moving parts that were involved in this deal, and it just kind of came together. But for the future, you know, I think that if we, you know, think along those lines, this deal, because of the component of the remodel, it's a good deal. I mean, you know, that's, was pointed out in the testimony last week, that the actual market value for the lease agreement's gonna be roughly what it's gonna cost to renovate it. So I don't have any problem with the deal, it's a good deal for the city. But just in the future, you know, when we provide competitive opportunities, this one would have probably stood up in a competitive setting. It would have probably been one of the top opportunities. But if we'd have did it that way, then other people could have brought us proposals, and we could have selected the best proposal. But I understand, again, there were many moving parts of this, it just, it fell into place, and I have no criticism about that, but just, you know, for the future, I think we have, as government, we have to be careful, because we work so closely with, you know, people like the Foundation, like the Chamber, like Startup Sioux Falls, that sometimes we forget that when other people are watching, that doesn't look so good when we don't, you know, when we don't use competitive means of doing things. So it's a good deal, I'm going to support it, but in the future, I would just kind of have that caution. And... And, uh, but yeah, I, I will support the deal, because I am a huge fan of what the Zeal Center, the Startup Sioux Falls is doing. I think they're engaging in precision growth, which is, I think, a track that the city needs to get on, it needs to jump on and jump into. And I think there are other places that we're going to be doing this and I'm, you know, I'm very excited to have them downtown and see what they can do in a new environment.
Other councilors? Hearing none? Let's go ahead and vote on the motion.
Councilmembers Nitzert?
Yes.
Selberg?
Yes.
Sale?
Yes.
Starr?
Yes.
Brecky?
Yes.
Erickson?
Yes.
Jensen?
Yes.
Kylie?
Yes.
All right, that motion passed eight to zero. Let's move to the next item, please.
Item 19 is a first reading, an ordinance of the city of Sioux Falls, South Dakota, amending the revised joint zoning ordinance for Lincoln County and the city of Sioux Falls by rezoning property legally described as west half, northeast quarter, X, south 247 and a half feet and west 24.75 feet thereof, section 22, tract 100, north, range 49 west, Lincoln County, South Dakota, from the A1 Agriculture District to the RR Rural Residential District. The Sioux Falls Planning Commission vote to recommend approval failed, zero to seven. The Lincoln County Planning Commission vote to recommend approval failed, zero to four. Recommendation, set a date a second, second reading for the joint. City Sioux Falls, County Lincoln County Commission meeting of Tuesday, January 25th, 2022. Private applicants, JSA Consulting Engineers, Lance Veier, John Descents.
Flora Giers.
Good evening. Uh, I'm Fletcher Lake Hawk, uh, urban planner with the Planning and Voluntaries Department, uh, with the city of Sioux Falls. Uh, wanted to bring this before you. Uh, it's a first reading, it is a rezoning for a property located in the joint jurisdiction area with the city of Sioux Falls and, uh, Lincoln County. Uh, this vicinity map shows you it's located southeast of the city in the joint jurisdiction area. What the joint jurisdiction area is, is a growth area in Lincoln County, it's not in the city, but we, it is, uh, for growth management. Uh, we've worked with Lincoln County to, uh, identify and review development in that area. So, what they've submitted is a rezoning request for approximately 71.14 acres of land currently zoned agr, agricultural district. Uh, they want to rezone it to rural residential district and they have, uh, submitted a preliminary subdivision plan to create a 25-lot residential development. This shows you some of the zoning in the area. I believe the yellow is, uh, also rural residential, uh, development in Lincoln County joint jurisdiction. Uh, but you can see that this, uh, 70 acres and adjacent land is void of structural development and is currently used as, uh, productive farmland. Here we have, uh, their proposed layout for those 25 residential lots. Uh, this was taken before the, uh, Joint Jurisdiction Planning Commission, uh, with, uh, staff recommendation that, uh, it did not meet the, was not consistent with the comprehensive plan of the city of Sioux Falls, as, uh, it was promoting development, uh, residential development in a rural area and our comprehensive plan recommends that, uh, rural areas outside of our tier growth areas be maintained as farmland and, uh, prevented from, uh, being developed. And, uh, the county, uh, Lincoln County staff, uh, supported that recommendation as well. The, uh, so what we have is our tier growth areas, this is outside of our tier three, which means that there won't be city services available, uh, beyond 26 years. Uh, so, uh, they're not, you know, it's going to add stress on county services and that was one of the Lincoln County's main concerns, uh, with this proposed development. Um, the intent of the growth and tier areas is to, uh, protect, excuse me, protect rural land and, uh, you know, we're working with Lincoln County, uh, staff in order to promote that and, and responsible development and growth of the city. Lincoln County's looking at, uh, the additional burden on rural service providers such as maintaining roads, um, uh, public safety, uh, fire services, et cetera, and preserving that agricultural land. And, uh, so when, uh, we took this to the joint planning commission meeting, uh, adjacent neighbors did come out in opposition to the, uh, requested rezoning and preliminary subdivision plan. Some of their items of concern were, uh, drainage, as well as, um, the impact on adjacent land uses. And, um, so their, uh, recommendation on this, uh, their motion to approve, uh, failed with a unanimous vote, uh, and that is where we are tonight. So, if there are any questions for staff, we are available. Otherwise, I believe the motion would be to move this for second reading.
Thank you. Anyone from the public wish to comment on this? Seeing none, councilors' questions? Counselor Nitzert?
If you rezone it to this rural residential, does that mean it's, it's not, um, governed by the, um, building eligibilities? I mean, normally, you can only have ones, you know, you only have so many building eligibilities. Is that only applying like agricultural? It's kind of a county question, but...
Yes, um, so what they're doing, they don't have the building eligibilities, so in order to get, or they'd have to collect together 25 building eligibilities in order to do this proposed subdivision. So, to get around that, it is, that's why they're requesting the, the rezoning to rural residential, which would eliminate that, that need.
Okay, so that, that, that limitation goes away if you, if you rezone it to RR. So, th, this would be much like one of the many, um, residential, rural residential subdivisions that we have around our, our city. And in many cases, we've grown around and we maybe have an annex where you have a, a resi, like the rural, a rural feel, but it'd be a, a little bit more dense and...
And that's, one of the concerns is that if, as, as, there is other development in the area, as you could see on the previous slide, that is rural residential. And as it begins to accumulate, that we lose the ability in the future for the city to grow in this area and, at densities that the city needs for residential development. And so, um, yeah, it's, that's, that's one of our concerns.
Well, and for those of us who served on the annexation task force, you run into major conflicts later when you come up against them, because obviously, they may not want to annex, they have different standards of all of their infrastructure, and then it's very difficult to grow around it and you end up with more and more pockets, so...
Very true. We see that in the city today, where there are pockets of, of development that happened when it was in the county and, and there's no incentive for them to annex into the city.
Okay, thank you.
Other questions? Counselor Jensen?
Your recommendation is to set a second reading of, at the joint Sioux Falls, um, Lincoln County meeting. At that meeting, the recommendation, I assume, will be to not support this, is that accurate?
Yeah, I believe, we're bringing forward is the Planning Commission's recommendation, which they recommended to approve and the motion failed. So, really, it's a recommendation to deny.
And if we're, so if we're against this and maybe this is, i- if we just want to vote this down, we could do it today, that could be an option as well? Would that be? No, okay.
I mean, Lincoln County would still need to be a part of that decision, so you can't just unilaterally take action on something that you're doing jointly with Lincoln County. So, I think that would be important to, to note.
So, we move it to the 25th, to the joint meeting, and then we collectively take action, would be the recommendation. Any other discussion? Take a motion? Can I have a motion that would move this to the second reading of the joint Sioux Falls City Council Lincoln County Commission meeting of the Tuesday, January 25th?
So moved. Nitzert.
Nitzert?
Second Brecky.
Second Brecky? Discussion on that? Let's have a vote, please.
Councilmembers?
Counselor Sale?
Yes!
Counselor Sale?
Yes, sir.
Thank you. Um, you know, I think, uh, Counselor Jensen does bring up a good point about whether we vote yes or no on it at this point in time. I mean, after all, when we do meet, yes, it's a joint meeting with Lincoln County and the Sioux Falls City Council. However, we're voting on this item as separate bodies. So, if, if one body does not pass it, when we do meet in the joint meeting, it will fail. So, it's hard for me to understand why we would go through the motions with this. I'd like opinion from our city attorney on that.
Well, anytime you have a vote like this, you have discretion to pass it to second reading. I think the point, and I, I guess I would ask staff to clarify, but I think what they're suggesting is that, if nothing else, out of courtesy and the ability to discuss the merits with Lincoln County, that you pass it to a, the second reading scheduled together. Say, so I, I understand that's what you're recommending, even though on the merits...
I, I think that's true, there, there is probably question of it, but I will tell you that Lincoln County this morning passed first reading on it, so they, they, they passed it along to, so there is certainly a conflict if you did not. They're, they're, they're expecting this to go to second reading.
Thank you. Counselor Nitzert?
One reason that, one reason that we may want to pass this at this point in time would be to provide for public input for those that, uh, are going to be impacted by this decision. Thank you.
And, and I wouldn't disagree with that, Counsel Kylie. Part of the point being, you know, the, the issue that's before the council here is not the merits, of course, it's to pass it to second reading. And so, if, if you'd be declining this on the merits, you're really doing it at a time where you're considering whether to have that second meeting. Uh, if that's sufficient lawyer speak for you.
Thank you very much, Counselor. Uh, did I hear Counselor Erickson?
Yes. So, question, question for the city attorney as well, just piggybacking on those few statements. So, I understand the passage to second reading, allow the public input at second reading, but again, it's just difficult to go through the motions if, 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 if you want to vote your conscience and say yea or nay at second reading, is that the appropriate time then and, and to allow for that public input?
Yeah, but I think, Counselor, the, the way maybe describe it is, um, i- is right now, you're voting on whether to, to have that discussion, right? And so, if you're, and, and I don't think that the council, as a sitter, is bound or obligated to pass this, other than that, again, there is the joint jurisdiction working relationship and, uh, and the fact that they anticipate it and to give, you know, the proponents and the public an opportunity to discuss it.
Does that answer your question? Counselor Erickson?
Uh, yeah, fair enough.
Thank you. Counselor Nitzert?
Yeah, the city attorney kind of grabbed what I was looking for, which was, uh, I, ma, it may or may not be legal to do it at this point, but I would argue we're not just going through the motions. I have, I have the assumption that the applicant is probably under the impression that second reading is at the joint meeting. And they're probably not, they may not even be here. And so, I think as a matter of fairness, whether or not there's any sort of due process violation, which is beyond my pay grade, but just as a matter of fairness, I, I would fully expect that, they're expecting to have this meeting to have their say and to just, I would be uncomfortable with just voting it down at this point when they may not even be under the impression that this is mu, nothing more than just a, a, essentially a formality to move on to the next step. And they may have been instructed, hey, the second reading is at the joint meeting. Because it is, after all, in the joint boundary, so it'd be, feel a little weird. Even though we both act independently, I get that, at that meeting. I think it's just a simple matter of fairness. Um, I, I would encourage moving it on.
Thank you. Counselor Starr?
I guess, and my question's for...
Counselor Sale?
Counselor Starr, and then I'll get to you, Counsel Kylie.
I guess that's my question for staff, then. Did we tell them to come for second reading and not be here tonight? Because we do do that at times.
I'm not aware that, because they were working with Toby Brown with Lincoln County. I'm sure they got that, the information about when second reading, first reading and second reading. Now, the preliminary subdivision plan, there is no first reading, it will be heard in conjunction with the rezoning at the January 25th meeting, so...
Thank you.
Counselor Kylie? Counselor Rick Kylie?
Thank you very much. Uh, I would encourage that, uh, these parties be invited, uh, or instructed to attend, uh, the meetings at this point in time, the first readings held by the county as well as the city. Uh, because number one, it gives us a clearer picture of what is being proposed. A lot of valuable information can be gleaned from these meetings that provides us additional information in which we can base our decisions on, uh, especially in the next week. You know, maybe Counselor Starr has more of that information, I'm not certain, but I don't. And it's always nice to have that extra time to, to follow up on some items that are brought up, for instance, this evening, um, from, from the parties involved. So, I will vote to move this forward, uh, but it would be nice to have, uh, have all parties present during these first readings. Thank you.
Other comments? Counselor Nitzert?
I don't want to, I don't want to belabor this, but one more thing, I, in, in conjunction with what Counselor Kylie said, I, I think this could be maybe a, a quick discussion with staff, because I will say, um, if, if you watch county meetings, many times, their first readings are literally just a notice. I mean, it's literally just read and, and, and they're just move on. And so, there may be, it could be the county staff maybe under the impression that it's nothing more than literally, it's a reading of, this is what's coming up and they, and it's just, they just move on. They, they don't do presentations many times, they don't go through what we do, and so they may just, um, take for granted the, the, just the idea that we could even vote something down at this stage, just because they have different processes. So, just maybe for them to be aware to tell their applicant, since they're the lead on these, you know, Toby and then, and the staff over Minnehaw County, that, that you should encourage the applicant to come to the first reading of the city ones, because we do things maybe a little different and we may have questions for them and it would be in, in their interest, so...
Thank you. I see some heads nodding in our staff, so this time, we'll vote on the motion that moves this to the second reading.
Councilmembers Nitzert?
Yes.
Selberg?
Yes.
Sale?
Yes.
Starr?
Yes.
Brecky?
Yes.
Erickson?
Yes.
Jensen?
Yes.
Kylie?
Yes.
Motion passes eight to zero. Let's go to the next item, please.
Item 20, a resolution vacating North Sycamore Avenue, right-of-way from the north right-of-way line of East 60th Street North to the south right-of-way line of Interstate 90, as shown on Exhibit A, sponsor mayor.
Do you have the floor, sir?
Good evening, Council Chair, City Council. Brian Wilcox, representing Engineering tonight on the next couple items. This item is a kind of extension of Sycamore Avenue up on the northeast corner of town. You may look familiar, it's part of the, um, Public Safety Training Center campus. Um, this section line is, has been, never been improved, unimproved right-of-way. The development plans for the public training center will not utilize this right-of-way for public need or use. Uh, there is one adjoining property owner who's also in support of, um, this right-of-way vacation, uh, so Engineering requests your approval and support this evening.
Thank you. Anyone here from the public to speak on this item? Councilors, questions?
Move approval? Second? Nitzert?
Motion of approval by Selberg, second by Nitzert. Comments, questions? Hearing none? We'll move for a vote, please.
Councilmembers Nitzert?
Yes.
Selberg?
Yes.
Sale?
Yes.
Starr?
Yes.
Brecky?
Yes.
Erickson?
Yes.
Jensen?
Yes.
Kylie?
Yes.
Thank you. That motion's passed eight to zero. Move to the next item, please.
Item 21, a resolution approving the release of a bus stop shelter easement located in Lot 2 of Western Mall subdivision of part of Tracts 1, 9, and 28 of County Auditor subdivision of the east half and east half, west half of Section 31 Township 101 North, range 49 west of the 5th PM... Range 49 West of the 5th PM. City of Sioux Falls, Maha County, South Dakota, except Lot H1, Lot H2, Lot H3 and Lot H4 contained therein. Sponsor Mayor.
You have the floor, sir.
Thank you. This item is a bus stop shelter easement. It's actually on the kind of the northeast corner of Best Buy at the Western Mall property. This was recorded by an exhibit in 2002, so practically 20 years ago that our metro did have a bus stop pickup and drop-off location kind of in that corner. Since the bus stop location's been moved out along 41st Street, kind of at the entrance of Best Buy. This easement release is also supported by Sioux area Metro and our city planning office. The new property owners for the Western Mall are requesting that this easement be released. Since there's no current shelter there or drop-off pickup location, it's just the easement that remains. So Engineering supports your...requests your support for releasing this easement.
Thank you. Anybody from the public wish to speak on this item? Counselors, other questions? Counsel Star?
Yes. Actually, where is the nearest bus stop drop-off then in that area? Because with the amount of housing that's would be to the southwest of that area, you know, I just had someone talk to me, not that a couple of weeks ago. I actually gave him a ride back to their apartment after we left an event at O'Gorman. And so where is that next spot? I know that's not an engineering question, and I...
Well, I researched it myself. It was because I was kind of curious, you know, how this bus shelter came about. But the...I guess the entrance and exit for...onto Best Buy's, so it'd be kind of northwest corner of this property. There is a...on the Sioux area metro route, it is identified as a drop-off pickup location. And there is a shelter located there as well.
Okay, that upper corner?
Yeah.
You can kind of see it?
I don't know if this thing has a pointer, but...yeah, it's essentially kind of to the northwest corner of this property here.
And with the housing that's to the southwest or to the west, it's not going to make any difference being closer or not closer when the weather's bad. So whether they're waiting for shelter or not. So, thank you.
Counselors, other questions? Is there a motion, please, to approve?
Move of approval? Nightser?
Second, Brecky.
Motion by Counsel Nightser, second by Brecky. Discussion? Counsel Nightser?
I just have to say, I don't know in all my time if I've ever seen this. I...it's kind of a unique deal. And I do remember there's a shelter there. And I was thinking it was going to be a...there's a bench that's up kind of in front of Best Buy at the street. And I was just going to ask where the Realtors are going to put all their advertisements if we take that bench out. Because it's always a Realtor on there. But I digress. Thanks.
Thank you. Any other discussion? Call for a vote, please.
Council members Nightser?
Yes.
Selberg?
Yes.
Sale?
Yes.
Star?
Yes.
Brecky?
Yes.
Erickson?
Yes.
Jensen?
Yes.
Kylie?
Yes.
That motion's passed eight to nothing. Next item is new business. Counselors, any new business to discuss? Seeing none, we'll move on to general public input. We are at the general public input portion of tonight's agenda. As a reminder, input during this portion will last no longer than three minutes per person. During general public input, the public is welcome to speak on any topic that did not appear earlier on the regular agenda. At this time, I'd like to invite members of the public forward for general public input.
Scott Ersmann, Sioux Falls. I was a little relieved tonight. I was worried I was going to get accosted again out in the lobby, but I guess that person didn't show up tonight, so I don't have to worry about it. Anyway, one of the fastest growing things in the country for tourism and/or business is e-recreational vehicles. So what does that mean? It means e-bikes, foot scooters, one-wheels, whatever you want to call them. There's all kinds of devices out there if you look them up. A few years ago, the city decided to pass a e-bike ordinance. And I'm not going to say anything about that and what we did, but it's time to get rid of it. Counselor Jensen had an idea about electric foot scooters and running them. The fastest growing industry is e-bikes. I don't even think they sell e-ones anymore. You might be able to buy one, I don't know. But E2s are set up to be anything. They can be non-e, so you can shut the power off. You can ride them as a regular bike, and they ride great as a regular bike. They can be E1, only pedal assist, no throttle. You get to choose your pedal assist. You want to pedal a lot, you can turn it down. If you want to pedal less, you turn it up. E2, that's heavy pedal assist, add throttle and only throttle. E1s don't do throttle. Like I said, I don't even know if they make E1s anymore. My thing is, is I think you should get rid of the current ordinance. You should allow all e-vehicles except for motorcycles, scooters, you know, stuff like that, large ATVs. And you should just get rid of it. Somebody suggested a speed limit. I don't think we even need that. I think we just need to...there are...people are already riding them. Go ride...go ride. And any night after work, you will see skateboards, foot scooters. There's a lady, she wears this weird hat. She's got like this three-wheel thing. She does like 30 miles an hour. You know, nobody's enforcing it. It's time just to repeal it. Now, you might want to tweak it. There might be some stuff you want to do to it. But it's the fastest growing industry in the country right now. Try to get an e-bike right now. You'll be waiting three to four months. It is huge. And it's huge on the tourism. We don't have it in Sioux Falls. Like I said, Jensen recommended that we would have something like that. They give tours. There's places, California, Albuquerque. They actually will take you on an e-bike tour. And I think we're missing out on Sioux Falls. I think there's a lot of times where we talk about how we're a big city and we want to do all this tourist things. But there's...everybody's doing this across the country. And I've been scratching my head why nobody's really doing it. Now, the bike shops in town, yes, they sell e-bikes, but I wouldn't buy one from them because they're not. They're too expensive. Anyway, thank you.
Anyone else for general? Anyone else for general public input?
Is this on?
It will be. They'll turn it on for you.
Good evening. My name is Chester D. Young, and I am here to inform you of all the stuff the city engineering department is doing wrong. Currently, they use the planning and zoning code for street design and pavement thickness. On November 30th, I had a meeting with city engineers. At that point, we had no traffic information as far as how much traffic was going to be on Taylor Street when they opened up Detroit. The city code says if there is no traffic data available, you use code 811.33, which says that you've got to go to Table 87. 87 turns around and lays out what the area you're looking at. We're looking at a local, local multifamily business area. It gives you lot count, and it also gives you traffic count. First thing I'm going to take a look at is your lot count. I did a count of all the houses currently on and using Taylor Street. There's 73. There's 21 additional lots. That gives you 92. As soon as you open up Grant Street, you're going to add a 200-unit apartment complex, which if you take a look, is already exceeds the number of lots the city allows into a residential area. The total count of this is going to be 294, which is in excess of 200% of what the city even recommends to allow into a residential area. You turn around and go to the traffic count. Traffic count, when you use a city's own formula, there's 71 houses in there already. Using their formula, that's 568. You add a 200-unit apartment complex. The city said I couldn't use 50%. They wanted 25. If their houses, cars are going to take the shortest route to Sycamore Avenue, they'll go that way. I'm only using 50%. That's 600. We've got a climbing wall. We've got a sand volleyball court. You're going to have 1,408 vehicles going down this street that's designed for 700 max. You turn around, when I tried to tell this to the city engineers, they said, we don't care about the numbers at all. This street's going in. It does not matter at all. The very next day, city engine traffic was out there, and they did an actual count on this traffic that was already on Taylor Street. That was a 24-hour count. It came up with 792 cars going on that street. That number is 135% higher than what the city's regs even call for. He...I talked to Mr. Hoffheister at that same time, and he indicated the city was using 500. Is there plans for allowing this street to go through? 500 is less than what they're even supposed to have. Anybody else coming to the city trying to do this, an engineer or developer, anybody like that, the city would laugh at them and throw it right out. And yet, your city engineers are trying to do this. I'd ask that the city commissioners take care of that and help us out. Thank you.
Thank you. Other general public input?
Hi. I am also involved in this situation. So we're talking about traffic coming down...
I'm sorry, I didn't get your name, ma'am.
I'm sorry. Barb Lucian.
Thank you.
I live on the dead-end road of Taylor Street. So putting an additional street on Grant will affect my property as well. I have a letter from a neighbor across from me that's also on Taylor. If I can read her letter, and then if I can just add a couple of my own comments afterwards, kind of counts for two people, but I shouldn't need more than about three minutes or a little more. Is that okay?
Do you have 2:43 left?
Okay, even though I'm representing two people?
Correct.
Okay. So this is from Deanna Streeter. She's at 4710 East Taylor Street. She said, please stop the dead-end road from...dead end from being removed. Please do not make this unsafe change. Please use Gordon Avenue entrance into this business area instead. This single-family home neighborhood has been a dead-end road for 60 years. Stop and reconsider putting people's safety first. Please give attention to the safety and well-being of the people in the neighborhood. Please, can our city planners stop and try to take more time to address these issues? We need long-range planning for this area. There's an adjacent empty land for sale. Now is the time to plan. Please do not remove the dead-end until the many parking, traffic, land usage and safety concerns have been heard and addressed. Please consider alternatives. She says Gordon Avenue has a turnoff from Arrowhead Parkway into this business area. And she's saying that our single-family residential area is responsible under city code to provide parking for businesses that do not offer parking for their customers. She's referring to the volleyball wall area that's going up that only has 40 parking spots available for their patrons, which is not enough. So they will have no choice but to park on our streets. And she said, please consider alternative. Thank you for your time. What I'd like to add is that this is just a nice, quiet neighborhood. Most of us moved into the neighborhood because we are on two dead-end streets. We're nearby Washington High School. We do still get quite a bit of traffic. Couple of years ago, I had somebody in the middle of the night come tearing through my front yard, probably 20 or so feet from my house, crashed through a bunch of things in my yard. And we're talking probably 40 feet into my yard. So things already happen. With this much increased traffic, we're worried about our safety. We have a lot...we don't have sidewalks, so we have a lot of foot traffic. We have a handicap man that comes down. He does not have the use of his hands or his legs. He's in a wheelchair. He takes his dog down, just down the middle of the street all the time. The dog runs, comes right back to him, and he goes back home again. We have a lot of diversity in the neighborhood, a lot of people that don't speak the language. And they walk very, you know, freely. The kids are out running around. And I'm not sure if they're necessarily going to be aware of everything that's going on, especially since we were not addressed by the engineer's office. We found out about this by finding out somebody's putting signs up in our neighborhood, and we didn't know anything about it. And now all of a sudden, we're going to be having a lot more traffic.
Thank you.
Mm-hmm.
Anyone else for general public comment?
Never done this before. Kind of nerve-wracking. My name's Elizabeth Archer, and I live on the corner of Detroit and Grant. Grant is the little gravel road that they're trying to make go through. Myself personally, Grant is a gravel road, lots of dust. Where we purchased this property because it was like a little slice of country in the middle of the city. You know, it's going to drastically change my property, drastically change the safety of my backyard, my front yard. Once again, like Barb mentioned, we do not have sidewalks anywhere. So if you are walking your dog, walking little kids, pushing a stroller with a couple of kids by...all these people have to walk in the street down Taylor, which is the access point from Sycamore to get into any of those little neighborhoods. We have a lot of dead ends and circle drives that they have to use Taylor as their access point. And there is no sidewalks there. So, I mean, even for me, just walking dogs myself, it's very dangerous. And to add more traffic in there, it's just...it's the last thing that neighborhood needs right now, especially with all the little kids around there. I also would propose coming in from Sycamore off of 10th Street there and coming up, I guess it would be Gordon, or coming off of Arrowhead and onto Gordon to get access to those apartments and the gym and the volleyball courts. Through the neighborhood is just...it's not safe for a lot of people. And I just...yeah, I just hope you can consider...reconsider that, or at least just take a look at it. Just to drive down that area is...it's such a quiet, little quaint, little place. And to add tons of traffic that's going to fly through there is just going to change it completely, not to mention be unsafe for all of our pedestrians and little kids. Thank you.
Thank you.
Evening. Lynette Buckmiller, Land Lock 200 South LaSalle Avenue, just north of 4900 East Grant Street. We drive across what used to be LaSalle Avenue, and it's now a gravel private drive to get access to a gravel road, which is nearly two blocks to the nearest hard-surface road. Although the biggest investment in our life is still sitting in the middle of a field in the city of Sioux Falls, this evening I'm here to discuss blacktopping a small portion of East Grant Street if you put it through. It is still gravel. It does create a lot of dust. And the neighbors deserve curb gutter streetlights and a hard-surface road, but blacktop is better than gravel. The city is opening up East Grant Street from Detroit Avenue to Foss Avenue, which will greatly increase traffic in our neighborhood. Jessie and I found out this project from the neighbor and the news, not City Hall. Several businesses are in the area, and when there are volleyball games, cars are parked along both sides of the entire street. We are paying the same levy taxes as the rest of Sioux Falls residents, and if you do put this street through, it deserves to be hard surface. They want it to remain gravel. Jessie and I were required by the city to put in a hard-surface road if we had to go to Taylor. Councilman Greg Nightser called our neighborhood a mess, and we agree. Now the city has a chance to make an improvement, and we hope that occurs. There is less than two blocks that is gravel. Old East Acres is an older neighborhood. Three blocks south of East Grant Street is in block topped with no curb and gutter. All citizens of Sioux Falls should be treated equally. If you put the road through, please make the gravel road a hard surface. Thank you for time, your time, and for listening. I would appreciate it if someone would contact us regarding our land lock paperwork. Councilman Greg Nightser gave all of you on June 5th of 2020. There are two sides to every story. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, Commissioner. I'm Jeff Maroon. I live on Taylor Street. And my concern is the amount of traffic. It's...I've lived there 35 years, and every year has just gotten worse. It's, I've lived there thirty-five years and every year has just gotten worse. Over the years, I've lost a couple of dogs from chasing squirrels and people they can't stop fast enough. I'm concerned about the amount of traffic and then the amount of kids in our neighborhood. I'm the only one that had installed a sidewalk and I did that twenty years ago for fear that if I didn't do it back then, it would have happened now. And then nowadays, you just don't know what's going to happen if you can afford a sidewalk. Lot of the people in our neighborhood are elderly and they're on a fixed income, so it'd be tough for them to have to put sidewalks in, you know, to make things a little easier for the people that do walk the neighborhoods. We've got a, an assisted living center that most of the occupants walk the neighborhood, something for them to do. And I'm in fear of, for them too. They are hard of hearing like I am. I have a hard time hearing, but if they don't have a safe walking area, it, everybody's at risk. The city should be making sure that they're correct on what they're wanting to do with Chester's a neighbor. He's got a lot of input on this. He's the one that brought it to my attention that, uh, some improvement movements were going to happen in front of his house. And we're all concerned that the improvements, if they're going to happen, that they get taken care of correctly. Thank you.
Thank you.
Sierra Bristow at Sioux Falls. I want to say one thing before I get to this neighborhood is we have human trafficking awareness. And I want you to read the org listed about Denise Sanford, so people needs to pull out of the premier bank. Cause it's getting closer to before he croaks, he'd be arrested with defense. This is a mess here. As a neighborhood association that I am, where the hell is the city at? These people need a neighborhood association. These people need a backbone because when I run my neighborhood association, the city doesn't run nothing in my neighborhood. The citizens run the neighborhood. So why in the hell is the city just coming out like these rich people that want to developing people's hearts and say, we're going to develop and you're just going to have to deal with it. Cause we're rich people and we do what the hell we want. This person is nineteen eighty-five, forty thousand dollars was her house. Why we can't put up no, uh, no parking signs on that street? I'm going to help these people. We're going to fundraise and we're going to get them their sidewalks. And I'm going to go to a hall teaser and we're going to give these people, these average middle-class citizen sidewalks. It's gut wrenching, the rich people. These are not your wine drinkers. These are your beer drinkers. These are your middle, average citizens that we forget about every day and in my neighborhoods too. I'm going to get a hold of Diane DeKor. We need to start up a neighborhood association because I think these people should need a neighborhood association. They need a backbone and a voice for the people in that neighborhood. As a community activist, I'm going to be these people's backbone. This is enough of the city wanting to stomp on the ground on these middle-class aged people. And who has developed in the property over here, um, these apartments here? Red flags is thrown to me that we need a neighborhood association for these people because they don't have a voice here. Forty-six sixteen East Taylor Street, eighteen houses are right there. The city never talked to them, never talked to them. I'm not going to be a preacher in a church. All y'all's rich people, get out your comfort zone, put down your wines in the southeast district and let's drink beer and go, did any one of y'all rich people go in this neighborhood? Instead of sitting down and drinking twenty dollar glass of wine? I'm not finished with you, Jake, cause I'm going to be a preacher in a church. We want to talk about Christianity, we're going to talk about it. These people need help. These are your middle-class, average people. Your rich people got rich over the poor people, okay? These people deserve something in our neighborhood. Having to walk in the middle of the street, why don't we have sidewalks in there?
Hi, my name is Diane DeYoung and I live on Grant Street, right where they're putting in the road. And they said they were just connecting the one part of Grant Street to the other part of Grant Street, but they actually came in the first Monday of the month, of the month and just scraped down the road, scraped as much as they could because the ground was frozen. And then they dumped nine truckloads of this ground up asphalt, which is going to turn our lawn into a black mess come the spring, come the next snowfall, because they're going to just scrape over it. It's loose. It's, it's looser than gravel is. It's just loose and they're going to scrape it all up when it comes to this next snowfall or the next rain or whatever comes. And I agree, they, they say they're putting through this street because it needs the safety part of it. Well, it's not, I don't think it's making our neighborhood any safer. I don't think it's making the street any safer. I think because there's so much, so many people that park on that street, on the other side of Grant Street that is paved, there are so many people that park there during those, during volleyball things that I don't know how they get us an emergency vehicle down there so they could do anything. It'd probably take ten minutes or twenty minutes before the apartment buildings could burn down probably before they'd be able to get up their equipment setup. There's so many people that park there. And no parking signs on our street, on our gravel side of the street, I don't think is really going to do any good because people are going to park there anyway if they feel like it. They're going to say, well, we're only going to be here for an hour, two hours. They're just going to park there anyway. And they're, they're not increasing the size of the street. They're leaving it at sixteen feet. Well, that's enough for one and a half cars, so you can't get two cars side by side. So I see the first time somebody comes flying down the road and somebody's off, walking even in the grass, that they might get killed or they might get hurt because somebody, you know, two people are trying to pass each other on the road that's only, you know, wide enough for maybe one and a half cars. And I just don't understand why they can't do it right the first time, instead of just putting it through because they want to put it through. It just doesn't make any sense. Thank you very much.
I'm David Sokitis and I'm here to talk about how we could make smoother roads. Seems like a good topic for tonight. Every winter, every spring, we get a certain amount of road destruction in Sioux Falls just because of weather and what really happens to roads. You know, you get some water in there, permeates down a little bit and then, and then expands and goes, and then stuff pops up and, and things break, especially along cracks and intersections, just because of the freeze thaw cycle and the area of the country that we live in. When the city goes and repairs broken down roads, usually they just throw in some asphalt. If we're lucky, they'll put a roller over it and flatten it a little bit. Once in a while, we see some concrete patches and once in a while, we have to rip up the whole freaking road because it's such a disaster. Some of the problems that we have, you know, roads are bumpy, it's hard on pedestrians, it's hard on people. And sometimes cars crash into each other trying to avoid the holes. And concrete breaks apart, asphalt breaks apart even faster. And then we have to go in year after year and fix the same stupid hole because we never fixed it right in the first place. So, you know, pictures are helpful. Here's a, a patch that you can tell has, has two bumps because you've got a bump going down and a bump going up. Would have been nice if that patch was smooth. And here's a spot where you can see it has been patched, looks like about five times. First, they cut out a piece of concrete, put, put some new concrete in there and that fell apart and now there's like three, maybe four different errors when asphalt was thrown in. Still going to be bumpy. So what do we do? Well, we think about everything and try to make everything better. Better materials, better methods. Does epoxy cement work? Does it help to grind out the hole? Can you make smoother repairs? Can you actually flatten things out after the repair? Can we fix things before they get so bad? And can we use prison labor so that we can put more time and effort into this? And if we use prison labor, maybe we could even pay them like ten times more than what they already get, which is only a dollar a day, kind of ridiculous. And of course, you have to have a reason to smile and enjoy life. And here's a nice view at Great Bear Park. And then, good evening, everybody.
Good evening. I'm Kim Maroon and I live on Taylor Street and I live on four six one sixty's Taylor Street. We live on a corner lot. Behind us is the cul-de-sac where we have multiple families that live together. They've come from other, um, countries and whatnot, help each other babysit and whatnot. They each have at least four vehicles, a piece themselves. They're constantly going to pick up other people because not all of them drive, but they do work. And I'm just concerned about the extra traffic that this grant, opening this grant area is going to have on Taylor Street. If you guys already did a, how many cars are going past there and it's way above and beyond, think of opening that up and how much more traffic there's going to be. I think of the bar that's over there and the volleyball and all of that. Who's to say nobody wants to just park their car there for the night on Taylor Street or wherever it is at and come and get it the next day and whatnot. I just think there's enough traffic in that neighborhood already with all of the dead ends and whatnot, that please reconsider what's going on. And whoever advised the people or let them build that apartment building and that extra lot and all of a sudden there's problems with that, why wasn't that considered first before this all started? Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Chad Bishop. I live at seven four zero five South Valencia Drive here in Sioux Falls. In the spirit of reducing an artificial political and social tension, I am once again asking you to reconsider, to consider acknowledging the people with COVID-19 recovered status in your policies, to grant exemptions regardless of federal policy, to join lawsuits where appropriate, to reimburse your employees and staff for antibody and adaptive T cell response assays so they might learn their immune status. And lastly, to work with the state legislature to procure funding for the nine hundred and seventy-four point five million currently in the treasury for COVID-19 relief. According to the Argus Leader, the South Dakota Department of Health Epidemiologist reports less than one percent reinfection of the COVID-19 recovered. It is my understanding as a layperson that the vaccines on offer induce the generation of spike type, or of S-type antibodies with accompanying B cells and T cell response. Comparatively, it is my understanding infection-induced immunity generates not only S-type but also N-type antibodies. In addition, there are another twenty-four antibodies induced from infection. Responsible for creating these now and upon secondary exposure, B cells created during natural infection continue to evolve to become more potent and able to block immun motivating variants. A layperson might also understand there is evidence of a robust and durable T cell response. Lastly, there are IgA antibodies present in the mucosal layer of our lungs and respiratory system, where no evidence has been presented that this can be induced through an intramuscular vaccination procedure. Now, the experts tell us that boosters are required because we need higher blood serum levels of that single vaccine-induced type S antibody, which was developed against last year's variant of concern. But what does it mean when the CEO of Pfizer just yesterday says concerning the Omicron variant on CNBC, "Two doses of the vaccine offers very limited protection, if any. Three doses with a booster offer reasonable protection against hospitalization and deaths, less protection against infection." When just nine months and nine, or when just nine months and nine days ago, he cited studies claiming one hundred percent effectiveness against infection. Is it the case that the evolutionary cycle of a beta coronavirus outstrips our ability to safely match it with a vaccination program? Is it the case that one prominent reason we have never had a human coronavirus vaccine approved in the past is because the immunological community knew this? How should I feel when associate justice in the US Supreme Court overstates the number of child hospitalizations by more than an order of magnitude while arguing the constitutionality of the administration's vaccine mandates? That was just one of four unfortunate pieces of misinformation and oral arguments by those in favor of bypassing the legislative branch. The CDC's Dr. Walensky actually corrected the record this weekend and Dr. Fauci himself acknowledged that many children currently hospitalized happen to have COVID-19 but were hospitalized for other reasons. Meanwhile, high-profile breakthrough cases of the fully vaccinated, fully boosted continue to quiet, be quietly acknowledged.
Thank you.
Thank you for your time.
Anyone else for general public input? Seeing none? I take a motion to adjourn.
Second, Knightser.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye. Aye.
All opposed, say nay.
Aye.
Adjourned.